Okay.
My regulars.
So, so you're, you're extra sort of.
Yeah.
We need you, but tonight you're not voting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So call us meeting to order. This is the zoning board of appeals. We're holding our meeting remote. It's Monday, the twenty first of October, twenty twenty four, and it's sort of like seven P M. Seven oh five on my computer. Uh, on the agenda. Well, before we get on the agenda, we need to make introductions. So I'm, I'm the chair. I'm Paul Shiner. Uh, John.
John Corville, Minister of the Z B A.
Leslie.
Uh, Leslie Bryant, C B A.
Paige.
Hi, everyone. Paige Sepiga, Vice Chair.
And Jerry.
Jerry Culver, C B A member.
And Brad, the alternate.
Yes, Brad Schultz, alternate.
Okay, and hiding in the corner on my screen is this guy Bill.
And Bill Lumsen, the planning director. I'm not hiding though.
All right. First, first order of agenda are minutes. And because I was carrying down the highway, I have not reviewed them recently. So I hope you folks have.
Uh, I have, and I found no, no errors, at least those pertain to myself.
All right, so we had what, two? Two sets of minutes, right?
August twenty sixth and September twenty third.
Right, yep.
Well. I make a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, August twenty sixth of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
So. Let's do that roll call in. Uh, John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And now, since I haven't read them. Can I vote, or should I let Brad vote?
If Brad's, if Brad's. There you go.
Okay.
Whatever you'd like.
All right.
I have read it.
All right.
Excellent.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of September twenty third, having read them and found nothing, uh, amiss regarding myself.
Second.
I have a question on them. So I, on the, on the. The second vote. For, um, the corner of Waldham Potter Mill, the B P gas station. I thought there was mention of painting the, the chain link thing on the Waldham side as part of that vote, but I didn't see that. In there.
Let me see here, wait, on, uh, um. In the minutes, you mean?
Yeah.
Hang on. That, that's, uh, there's also, I had another question, but, but, um. I think I've. Let's see here, let me, just give me one second, John, let me just pull it up and look right at it. Painting the, 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 the chain link fence.
Right, on the Waldham side.
Yeah, I, I'm sure. I'm sure we did.
Yeah, there's reference in there. It's just, it, it. Maybe could be more clear, but it does say paint and straighten the chain link fence and insert green fabric in it.
I thought that was on the Jiffy Loop side, but not the Waldham side, but maybe I got, maybe I got it mixed up.
I could, I could be wrong.
Let me, let me make a suggestion then. Because that, that fellow has made some complaints. That we review these minutes in detail. Relative to how we phrase the decision, because different people. Orchestrated the text for these minutes. And he's, he's gonna hold these minutes against us if they're in conflict with what was actually said. And what we believe was said.
I do have a solution for that. I was gonna talk to you about later, but, but let me see, in the. Okay, here, I'm going to, um. Here's the decision. And I will share it with you, and I think it's all captured in the decision. Let's see here. And, uh, um.
Yeah, because the wording in the decision is more specific than that of what's in the meeting minutes, as I recall.
Yeah, and Bill and I put those. Decision texts together. Without the benefit of whoever transcribed the minutes.
Okay.
Because, you know, the point of contention I have on that. Is. Uh, I asked somewhere, either the first day or the second day of that meeting. What is the business hours? What is eight P M? And he said that's when he has business. So after eight, because it was on the, on his diagram. After eight is not a minute, a meeting, or of the, it's not an open business anymore. And now he's grumpy about that.
Well, here, here's the bottom line. I, I, I think, uh, not, not to get, and we don't have to get into much anything, uh. Here's what I would suggest, and we, and, and, and the easiest way to handle this, that in the end, it did say the offense repainted, John. In the, um. In the decision, um, the, 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 the bottom line is that. When a special permit, and we do this all the time in the planning board, we haven't done it with us, because we just don't have it that much. They, board always has a option with any decision they do. To make a, a determination if a, a minor adjustment is considered a major. Or a minor. Um. Amendment. And a minor amendment is simply an administrative, um. Vote of the planning board. They decide, like, for example, somebody may say, oh, it was supposed to be six and a half inches, and the board put. You know, seven and a half inches, but as long as the intent isn't changed. That can be done, and a, an applicant can always request that. We do that a couple of times, e- easy, uh, every couple of meetings. My suggestion, since this has to deal with late hours, potentially later hours in eight P M., we put eight P M. in the. Decision itself. Uh, if the applicant wanted, he, he, his concern was that if he wanted to stay open till nine or ten. And have the applicant still, I mean, have the, um, attendant park. Cars, or whatever, or rental vehicles coming back. So my suggestion is gonna be, what I would recommend, the easy way to, to take care of this is if the applicant decides he does want to do that, he can come before this board at a regular poster meeting, it's no big deal. And if the board decides it's a major amendment, then we start all over again, but if it's a minor amendment, it's administrative, we do it there. That way, he can do what he wants to do right now. And if he decides he does want to open till nine, it's, it's, it's not. I mean, like I said, with. We haven't done it, is this board just because of the nature, the type of, uh, special permits we do? But if the board's comfortable with that, I'll just relay that, and we can put it to bed.
So, the, the problem I have with that, Bill.
Okay.
We have had a public hearing. Um, and a decision. And he wants to change it within two years.
Hmm.
He's, he is. Stuck, in my mind, with two years. Because of the state rules. On, uh, reappearing for the same issue.
Except, and that you would be correct, except. That we have this, and I pull, I have this ready to, just, I'll show you. I put in our bylaws, we, we've, um. Uh, where do we go? Um, let's see here. Yeah, our bylaws specifically call that out. On that. Uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna inadvertently disconnect you here. But let me just show, let me see if I can pull it up and show you. Quick. Um. I've been wrestling with this thing so long, that's why it's kind of.
So in the zoning bylaws?
Yeah, I'm gonna get the, I'm gonna open them up right now, I think. And we have a, a, there we go. So now, if you can see these. This is. Uh, uh.
You gotta hit a button first. Oh, now we have a black screen.
Oh, no.
Now it's thinking about it. Started sharing.
Okay.
But if we don't, ah, oh, yep, ooh, look at that, wow.
So this is what we do. We do this a lot with the, um. Like I said, we, we've, oh, so.
You're gonna lodge it a little bit, Bill?
Can I, yeah, maybe. I think, I should be able to. Uh.
Yeah, the magnifying glass, I think.
Yeah, there we go.
Are you talking four, five there? Ten, four, five?
Yeah, uh, I, I'm sorry.
Don't need it that big.
Well, I just lost the whole darn thing. I had it up to, um, but. It was, oh. There we go, right here, ten, four, five, right here, can you guys see it?
Yep.
This is what I was talking about. So this. Is the easiest way to do it, in my opinion.
So the, uh, two-year rule does not apply, you're saying?
For minor, if it's minor.
But if it's major.
Then it start, then your two-year thing goes in.
Before he has his request to be heard again.
Yeah. Or if, if it was, if it was determined that, you know, what happened was that we were talking about. We, he said eight o'clock in his, in his presentation. And I think he put that as. I don't know, i- it was in it, oh. And then we were talking about hours of operation, hours of operation. So his point was, well, if I want to go later. You know, at nine or ten o'clock. Why, you know, I want to be able to do that. My suggestion is, if he's not ready to do it now anyway, just say, okay, if you want to do it, come in and. And see if it's a minor or major, and don't worry about it.
And then, then, you know, we're, we're talking out of school here, but. He has to come and explain why. Opening later in a residential area would be. Useful to the local town and, and.
Right.
Atmosphere.
Exactly.
But.
I mean, board may say, no, I don't know, but, but, you know, I'm just saying that takes, that saves. Him from going to a public hearing, if we don't need one, if the board doesn't think it's a big deal, another hour, hour and a half, whatever.
Well, yeah, that, that, on that whole meeting thing with him was painful, it took so long. That's why I don't want to do another hearing.
Yeah.
It was extremely painful. But anyhow, back on the minutes. So we got, we got distracted here, back on the minutes.
Does that make sense, though, so I can put that to bed? I, I'll tell them that, or are you guys not comfortable with that?
I'll go with it. I agree.
So, in, ju- just, you know, on, on the minutes thing, I, I, I just want to hang on to this till we're, you're.
Yeah.
In agreement.
Okay.
The text of those two sets of minutes.
Yes.
Do they agree? With what we have in the decision? Or is there a discrepancy that we need to resolve one way or the other?
Well, I believe we're going to find the discrepancy would be the, um. Let's see, let's look, let me pull it up here, and we'll look at it. We can look on, we can look on my show on view. All right, and. Words, where do we go? Hang on, what? And. Where'd you go, zoning board, there you are, okay? Mike, and that was last meeting, which was, um.
There were the two of them. And the thing that I worry about is the first meeting where we had something to talk about. I've sort of forgotten what it was we talked.
Okay, we'll, we'll pull them both up, how's that?
Yeah. Sorry, Steve, it's just, you know, protocol, we gotta get this done.
Okay, you want to look at the twenty, uh, the, uh, eight, the August one first?
Yeah.
Okay, can you see it, or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And we'll make sure they're. Right, um, um. You see it, guy?
It's working. It hasn't, we don't see anything yet. Just a black screen.
You should see it now.
Oh, now, yep, yep, oh, we got something cool. Okay. Now we need to scroll up a little bit.
Okay, this is the first one, um, okay, let's see. Let me see, so.
Oh, it doesn't say anything there, it's just that we started talking.
Yeah, we asked them, this is when we asked them to bring sketches and the plans and everything wanted. Okay, so the next one. Was, there's not much there. Okay, um. All right.
So you're getting these minutes transcribed by somebody who was not at the meeting. At all, right?
That's right, they watched it, we. I mean, they're there by the video, the whole thing.
That must be exciting to watch as in action.
Oh, I'm sure.
Why don't you, why don't you apply for that job, Paul, you'll love it.
I, I can always use another one. Okay, can you see it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, here we go. And here's his. Point, as we said, random from seven to eight.
So it's in the minutes?
So, yeah.
And that was by an independent person?
That, yeah, there, nobody with a dog in the fight, but.
Thank you. I was worried about that, because I, I swear it was in there somewhere.
It, it's in there. But the, the, the. That's what I'm saying, he's saying it, well. And it was not only there, it was in his presentation.
The seven A M. was not.
Oh.
So the seven A M., the, the stenographer picked it up from the tech, or from the verbiage somewhere.
So. Uh, that would be my suggestion, is just if he wants to, if he decides he wants to do it. Let him come in, make his case, and if he decide, guys decided it's a, a, a minor modification, like I said, we do this with a lot of stuff, of, of this small nature. And if it is a major, then you come back, and that's the end of it.
Okay. You, 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 uh, calmed my concerns, Bill, thank you. So, so where do we stand on? Um, John's question of paint, painting, was that, was that covered in those minutes?
Oh, God, I just.
I saw it, I saw it, it's, it's both sides, it's at both sides.
Good.
The Jiffy Loop and the Waldham Street side.
Yeah, and it's in the decision, which is recorded already, so.
Good, so. Did, did we get a motion and second on this one?
Yes, we do.
All right. So, so let's do a vote. Uh, John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I, I'll. I'll confirm it with a yes as well. Hell, we were done with something.
Okay. At least we got it the way we want it, and it's correct, and we got.
All right, now, now to the, the main action here. We're holding a public hearing on One Hundred Great Road, Maynard. It's a special permit application filed by the property owner, Stephen McFarlane, One Hundred Great Road, Maynard. The subject property, One Hundred Great Road, Maynard, is a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot due to insufficient lot frontage, front setback, rear setback, and left setback. In the general residence zoning district. The applicant requests a special permit approval to undertake renovations to the property, which would extend the front setback non-conformity. Which is twenty-five feet from. No. Somebody wrote this weird. Which would extend the front setback non-conformity. Which should be twenty-five feet. From the existing sixteen point four down to fourteen point four feet, is his proposal.
Correct.
Well.
Some help?
If, if that. That last sentence I stumbled on, because it's not written accurately, Bill.
Okay, well, we use, we use the one in the, um. We use the one in the staff report, I can open that up.
Okay, so. The applicant, I see a Steve McFarlane there, so if you could explain. What you want to do, why you want to do it, why you need relief from the zoning board, that would be great.
Okay, um, now, I appreciate, uh, and again, thank you, I, 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 I didn't realize I'd be the only one on the, uh, on the agenda today, so, uh, again, I appreciate you guys taking the, the time to, uh, to, to hear my case, um. So, I've been living in this house since two thousand and five, um, when we first moved in. Uh, had tiger inspection come in, and they took a, the guy crawled under that front porch, it's a, it's a. It's not insulated, and he looked at it, and he said, you know, the, the Joyce, it's, they're too far apart up there. It's, uh, you know, eventually this thing's gonna fall apart, and that was twenty years ago, or nineteen years ago, so I've always known that I was gonna have to tear it down and replace it, um. Like, the floors are kind of spongy when you walk out there now, and, uh, and then I was up on the, I was up on the roof, and that felt a little spongy, too, so I'm gonna have to rebuild it. Um, I could rebuild it. On the same footprint. And convert it to an all-season porch, that was certainly one of the options, it's just if I did, because it's only six feet wide. Once I insulated it, I'd basically have. Like five to five and a half feet of, of space, and there would just be a. Long hallway with, uh.
So, so let, let me interrupt you, are we talking about a room? Or a porch, or what?
Yeah, so it's, uh, the, the, the front part of it is a, is a porch, uh, there, yeah, there we go, it's a part in red, so, uh, and that's, that's on, that's on Great Road.
And that's the spongy part?
Yeah, yeah, that's the part, it's gonna, it's gonna have to come down at some point, and, uh, and I've always wanted to do it. Uh, it just. Rebuilding it on the existing footprint, it's, it's, it's like a big, it would just be five feet wide in a big, long closet. Um, I talked to Bill about this a couple of years ago, um, I think it was like twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one when I came in. And, um. You know, I think the, uh, Bill had kind of advised me to. Come back and, you know, think about. Think about it from a, maybe like an economic, uh, perspective, uh, so I did that. But I also have kind of the human aspect of it, too, so I'll go into, I'll go into both of those. Right now, the, um, the, the, it's not a big house, I mean, you can see right there, I've got, uh, two twelve-by-ten bedrooms, uh, and another nine-by-ten room, which I'm in right now, this is my. Guest room slash office, uh, and. If I. Was able to build this new addition, um. I could move my office actually down into that, that area, uh, if I could make it instead of. Six feet, if I could move it out to eight feet, I'd actually have more space down there for, for an office, and then, uh, and then, and a gym, and it would free this up to be a, a, you know, a dedicated bedroom. Um, I did.
Wait, I, I'm confused again. A gym and a bedroom? I thought we were talking a porch.
I'm sorry, the, we are talking about the porch, I'm just talking about what I would use the space for.
The space in the porch?
Yeah, yeah.
So you would, it's, is this a, a three-season porch?
I can convert it to all, all season, a four, it's, it's a, it's a, it's not insulated now, so it's like a two-season porch. Uh, I would want to make it. An insulated. Fully insulated, all-season. Front porch.
So it, it's no longer a porch, then, it's a room?
Yeah, it's, it's, so right now it's closed in, so it's not a, it's not a deck, it's got a roof. It's got a roof to it, and, and storm windows, um, so I'd, I'd. Take that down, and I'd convert it into, uh, an all-season. Space.
Okay. Sorry, go on.
Yeah, so, um, then that would, you know, I, I think that that would give, uh, that would give this house three, three dedicated bedrooms, or three bedrooms, um. And, you know, so there certainly is a financial uplift to that, you know, when I pulled numbers from Rocket Mortgage, it said, three-bedroom house would be, you know, that would add about ninety-five K. to the value. Um, from an aesthetics perspective, or from a living space perspective. You know, I, my wife and I, we have one daughter, uh. You know, and, and when she was born, there's no, there was no playroom at all, there's no playroom on the first floor, so. Her. Toys ended up being everywhere, and we were, every time birthday or Christmas came around, like, God forbid, please, somebody don't, don't, don't buy her like a Barbie's Dream House, or, or some kind of large thing, because it would, it would, it would, it would take up all her space, so it, you know, having. Family and friends over, you know, with, with, uh, with kids, um. The kids just didn't have their own separate area. And if I. If I had been able to do this, I think, back when we first moved in, uh, that would have been the playroom, you know, out there on the front. And I think about it from, uh, you know, there's gonna come a time someday down the road, I don't have any plans for it just yet. But, uh. You know, when I sell this place, having something where a family can move in and have three dedicated bedrooms and a playroom is gonna make it very, very appealing. Uh, I don't know what we would have done if we had more than one child, you know, with, uh, with this space. So, uh. You know, my daughter graduating from Maynard High School this year, uh, I, I would like to. Build that. Space that I always envisioned, and, uh, and have my. You, move my desk that I'm sitting at right now down there, and then also put, uh, you know, put the treadmill out there, but again, I think, I think any family moving in that I would sell the house to would, you know, see this is very, very appealing. Uh, but it's. Rebuilding on the existing footprint, it just, it's, like I said, it's a long hallway. I, extending it out a couple more feet would, uh, would add to the value of the house, and I think would, uh, would make that a, uh, you know, a usable, usable multipurpose room.
So the, the. Uh, extensions you want are. The, with the front. And the left. And you want the right as well?
Yeah, so, um, when you look, uh, if you're, we zoom in on this, right now, the. The house is, uh, twenty-six. Uh. Twenty-six point five feet. Right? And I would want, so I wouldn't encroach further on either side. I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna extend the. I would extend the porch, but it would be, uh, two feet. Uh, less, so we, I, I'd take it in a foot on each side, so I'm not. Uh, adding, augmenting the, uh, um, pre-existing non-conformity on the neighbor's side, the only. Place that I would be proposing to encroach further would be towards the, the main road. Um, the other thing I do, would want to say is, my, my neighbor's just to the right there, um, their, their deck is actually, they're, they're. Enclosed front porch, similar. Structure is, uh, is actually thirteen, I think thirteen and a half feet from the road, says fifteen there, but I don't, doesn't. Seem right, I, I measured it with a tape measure, so.
Steve, one of the changes, since I spoke to you a couple of years ago. Uh, was there's, and, and this board has been working a lot with them. Uh, with this change, um. For one and, and two family units. Um, if there's an existing encroachment. In this case, where there fail, there's, it doesn't meet the twenty-five-foot setback, it's twenty-two point eight. Um. In, when we originally spoke about this, it would have been a variance a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
The, the court has, has, has interpreted that differently now, so now it's, it's because there's already an existing. Encroachment on the front, this is just a extension of the encroachment into the front setback, so the relief you'd be requesting. Is, um, a further encroachment into existing non-conformity, just so the board is clear about that, and just so. I didn't get a chance to talk to you about that, but that had been a change, that's.
Uh, tha- thank you, Bill, um, yeah, thanks for that clarification.
All right, so. I'm trying to find in your staff report, Bill.
Okay.
I might have it here. They don't, when I download it from the website. It doesn't really give me a clue as to what I'm looking at, it was a, a, a document heading. So I gotta fumble through it.
Fumble? Through my staff report, no.
Well, when I get the, the original application, the staff report, the agenda. I have. Three things called agenda. And two things called One Hundred Great Road. And one of them's one, and one of them's the other, and I don't know which until I keep opening them up and trying to find something that's different among.
Just, oh, well, we, okay, here, I got it pulled up here, let's just look at it, I'll pull it, I'll show it to you right here. And we did, we're trying to redo these, we're trying to do these staff reports, we, we just changed the format, you can see if you like this one, too, this is a little different, which we're trying to. We're trying to make it so we can make them almost like the, the, just.
Uh-oh. There, no, you came and went.
Can you see the, uh, can you see?
No, no, you went back to yourself. Here.
It keeps, okay, let's try this again here. My, my new fancy staff report, there you go.
Not yet.
No.
Yeah. Is that it?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a little deeper format, but this is, this should be pretty cool. So far, staff reports go. So. Here's. You guys can see it now?
Yeah.
Okay. And this goes on. Our. What we're doing. This explains what I just explained there, and here's the. Dimensional requirements. And you can see why. With the change, this is the, the non-conformities.
I, oh, well, just, just to pick on you there, Bill, where it says required. You don't have forty percent coverage, you only have twenty percent coverage.
That's correct.
So you need another twenty percent.
The, there is, right now. Um. There. Maximum building, no, the maximum building coverage.
Ah, oh, the maximum, I didn't see it side, side there. So then, then the max or min comment should extend down as well, side yard setback, maximum or min. maximum or minimum fifteen feet or whatever that is. Just because dummies like me sometimes get confused. All right, so I got the table. So now, down to what is required. So this is because it's a, we're doing special permit now.
Right.
And so action required.
These are what we're considering.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't have to find each one, but you have to consider it, and then I put this in, I thought this would be helpful for you guys. This is also just a kind of reminder, like when we're making motions. So I just put this in, I thought it would be kind of to get us thinking about, in this case, it doesn't really matter, but, but other cases it will. And that's helpful. And then I thought, and then here's.
All right. So go back up to those four or five things that we need to contemplate.
Okay.
Up a little bit, no, no, don't shrink it on me. And the, and the one that strikes me is neighborhood character. And Steve said that his neighbor had something similar, now that was an enclosed front room?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so on either side, actually, so, um.
Both of them have that enclosed front room.
Yeah.
At, at about the same distance from the street?
Uh, the neighbor to my, uh, when, when, when we're looking at that, that plot plan on the right, uh,
He's closer.
Chris and Taylor, yeah, they're closer, uh, Alan and Mary Ellen, uh, are, uh, they're, they're, they're they're further back, but it's just sort of the way the, the Great Road is angled, and actually, I think they did a, um, I, I wanna say back in two thousand nine. Alan did, I got this idea from him, actually, he had, uh, he had a same footprint of a, of a front enclosed porch and he extended it out two feet closer to the road.
All right.
I think that was a, I remember there being a ZBA case, that might have been it. One of those houses.
It might have been before me, probably.
Long ago, Bill? Been here forever.
Yeah.
So if we look at the other five items there, I don't think there's any impact on any of those. Except maybe the town getting some more tax money.
As far as action required, they determine each of the following, um, as far as impacts on the environment, I would like if we do decide to grant this, I would like a stipulation that any outside lighting be, um,
Are what compliant, excuse me?
Dark skies compliant, in other words, amber lighting or, um, uh, motion detector.
So, great, great road, isn't that one seventeen?
It is, yes.
And don't they have four hundred million cars go through there all the time?
That doesn't make it right to add to the, you know, especially at night, it's not a million cars through there at night.
It's pretty typical that we do require dark sky compliant lighting on any new lighting that goes in, um, that in itself is just, it, it's, it's a very common, and that's something if, if, uh, Steve, if you just go, if you're gonna, are you gonna add additional lighting?
I, it's, uh, just something, uh, for safety, kind of looking down.
You can just make sure it's dark sky compliant, at the, the light, they'll tell you, right, at the hardware store, they'll say. It just, it's, it doesn't, um, it, it, it's really, you think it's for aesthetics, but it's also for wildlife. And, and, um, that kind of thing, so we are trying to do that through wherever we can with any upgrades, and it, um, it, it's consistent with, you know, our, our, our bylaws and our, um, landscape bylaws.
So, what, excuse me, Bill, I'm, I'm getting a little confused here, so for him to put a light on his driveway, he has to get a special kind of light bulb to illuminate his driveway?
Let me show you, yeah, it typically.
Amber light.
Cause I just get on the hardware store and get something bright enough so I can see.
Well, it's not, it's not necessarily the light bulb, it's where, i- i- if you're doing, like, and, and for example, if we're doing in a, in a commercial setting, here, look, I'll show you here, um. They're shielded is a big part of it, so, you know, it goes down to illuminate where you're supposed to illuminate. Go over to the neighbor, uh, like we do like in a commercial setting where we have a, um, uh, high, uh, stanchions and, and the lights are going down, they're, they're focused. Uh, they're directed, I should say, um, and there's a, a, here, I'll, I'll share here. Let's see if we can, uh, get this on.
Right, you know, for my driveway, I just have a floodlight that illuminates the driveway.
Well, that's not great.
So I can see, the driveway's fifty feet long, I wanna be able to see it.
Well, that, that's up to the board, but, but, but I, 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 um, where did my?
You killed it.
He did, I just had.
I could make, yeah, I, I would, I would make that dark sky compliant, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
That's easy then.
Yeah. You might even have dark sky compliant, Paul, you might not even know it, if you, if it's fairly new.
But it's only about thirty years old, it's just a socket.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Oh, when the last bird dies.
So you're okay, we make that a condition, Steve, any new lighting would be dark sky compliant.
I've been yakking a lot here. Let's, let's, yeah, get the rest of the board. John, any questions, comments?
Nope, I'm good with it.
Paige?
Nope, same.
Gary?
I'm good. And the dark sky lighting, as Bill said, very common everywhere, every development, every house that gets built nowadays, mostly a condo complexes. You know, you can replace your bulb, but if you're gonna put a new fixture up, it's got to be dark sky compliant.
First time I heard of it.
Oh, oh, it's very, we'd, well, 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 Bill knows all of the new green matter school lighting for the parking lot, but the building itself would be all dark sky required. Yep. Very common.
Thanks, Leslie, any, any comments other than your dark sky?
No, that's fine.
Brad?
Nope, no comments.
So what do we do now? Somebody wanna make a motion?
Right, make a motion to, um, accept. There. Oh, my, I, I'm tired, huh? I make a motion to grant, uh, the special permit to undertake renovations to the property at one hundred Great Road, Maynard, which would extend the front setback non-conformity from sixteen point four feet to fourteen point four feet. Uh, given that we have reviewed the, um, well, what would you call those?
Block plan?
Yeah, I'll open, you want me to open it again?
Yeah, please.
Well.
All right. Yeah, let me just get the staff report open and see if there's three other. Somehow I got two windows open.
Well, do we have to consider the soil?
Those six items there. Uh, traffic, social, public services, neighborhood, environment, and fiscal, and you already nailed environment with the light bulbs.
Right, so we've considered all of those and, um, other than dark sky compliant lighting, uh, we find no uh, no other issues.
So I think what you're trying to say, Leslie, is that there is a condition that he use dark sky lighting.
Yes.
So that's part of the, uh, what do you call it, we're talking about, special permit?
All right, can you see it now? You should be able to see it.
Yeah, we, we see something, we're too far down, you gotta roll up half a page.
Board vote, you see a board vote?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you on the wrong one. I'm, I've got some kind of, like, computer's been goofy here. See if this works.
There's something from Green Maynard's meeting just popped up on my screen, what are they talking about? Dark sky lighting.
That's something I'll never forget now. Dark sky, this and that, it'll just keep haunting me.
Can you guys see that now?
Yeah, we, we see it, but you're, we're, we're recording of decision, we're not recording granting a special permit.
Board vote, here, three.
Okay, we need some numbers, I think Leslie put some numbers in it. Extending to fourteen point four feet.
Right, from sixteen point four to fourteen point four, I believe, was the.
Yeah, and the side, and the side setbacks. There are less non-conforming than the existing structure. Existing house, excuse me. There we go. All right, do we have it all? Do we know what we're doing?
Yes. I'm willing to second what Leslie said.
Good.
What Bill showed.
Excellent. And, and you're, do we wanna include Tom in on the side setbacks? Because he's, he's putting a building and it's gonna be trespassing into the setback zone, but it's less than the house.
If, if the board feels better, we can, um, well, actually, we already said that with the, we, I'll just put the applicant's plan as an exhibit for the decision.
Thank you. That works.
And then with a condition that we had with dark, any new dark, any new lighting will be dark sky compliant, and I think we're in tall cotton.
All right, so let's do a, a roll call, John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well.
There you go.
And so what, what I like to do now is have Bill sketch out the timeline of when what happens before he can get his building started.
So what we'll do, Steve, we'll, we'll, um, we'll draft the decision. Um, and we'll probably have that ready before next week. Uh, easily, um, is, and, uh, we'll file it with the clerk and we will notify you and send you a copy of the decision, and once it's recorded with a clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. Um, all that is involved in that is that we send out a, a notice to the butters again. We say, are you okay with this, and if nobody has any problem with it, um, there, we'll call you after twenty days, you'll pick it up, the, the decision that's recorded with the clerk, and then the only thing you have to do this, that's, um, after that, we'll, we'll send that to the building commissioner and you go, but you do have to do that, you have to file it with the registry of deeds, which you probably are aware of.
A chamber or something like that to do that?
Yeah, yeah, and the reason for that is so that you're protected. When you, if you sell a house and everything, it's like, okay, here's how you did it. Um, and then, but, but basically, you go right, you know, twenty-one days, you go right and go right to permits.
When, um, when could I, uh, demo, uh, begin the demolition?
Well, you have to get a permit for that.
You do, okay.
With Rick, yeah, with the building commissioner, yeah. And that I don't handle, he can handle that, and he'd probably let you do it now. You gotta fill it once you complete everything. That, this board doesn't get involved with that, and I don't. We only build things.
Is that still Rick?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Bill, is he back from vacation?
He's got back today, he did. He did.
I got a, uh, I, so I, I, I worked with Rick when I had the, uh, the last edition, and, uh, uh, yeah, you know, when I, when I, I, I had an addition out in the back, and he, uh, I had, well, it was so funny, cause I had one more question for him, and he had just left, like walked out the house like a minute before, and it was like he disappeared into thin air, I, I, he just, and I, I tried to call him and he was like, nope, on to the next thing, so. Now, he's a, uh, I, 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 yeah, I, I, I know Rick, I've worked with him, uh, he actually helped me out with the, the last one, so.
Okay, great, well, let's, that's it.
Okay. Um, thank you, everybody, uh, and, and, um, Bill, thanks so much for your coaching and guidance, um, you know, when I came out to you a couple of years ago. Um, so, you know, with wanting to do this, I appreciate, uh, appreciate all the help.
Well, I'm, I'm glad everything went well, and we'll see, get to, looking forward to seeing the new construct.
All right, yeah, my daughter, uh, she, like I said, she graduates this year, so she actually told me, she's like, were you gonna like rebuild this thing so it looks nice when they put my name out in the front lawn that I'm graduating from? I guess, I'm gonna have you be the, your yard be the laughing stock of everybody. So, thank you, everybody.
Sure thing, good luck to you.
Welcome.
All right, cheers.
So, Bill, is that the end of our agenda for tonight?
That's it, it's, it's quality, not quantity.
All right.
And make a motion to, uh, close the meeting?
Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, just say hello, wave. So I guess we're done. Much nicer meeting than the last one, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Buddy, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Watch out for trick-or-treaters.
Right.